Good morning and welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. Those of you in the audience and those of you by way of televenue or other social media, welcome. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order. All those present, please raise your right hand. Thank you. At this time, we should have invocation by Commissioner Foley and a pledge by Commissioner Orange.
Let us pray. Almighty and merciful Father, we humbly beseech thee to watch over us as we do the people's business this morning. Please guide us with your invisible hands so that we may find your favor in the decisions that we reach. Please bless us with your grace through Jesus Christ, our only mediator and advocate. Amen.
Let's face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's time we should have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remove item one from the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we remove item one from the consent agenda. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those oppose. I'll say, thank you. It is removed. It's time we have the, with that being done, can we approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we do approve the agenda as noted. All in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Agenda approved. At this time, we have the presentation, Boys and Girls Club, the Youth Voice. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, we have three individuals from the Boys and Girls Club. We'd like to come before the board to make a presentation. They're going to be participating as part of the NCACC, which is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference, as part of the Youth Voice, part of that conference. And as part of that, they are to come and make a three-minute presentation to the Board of County Commissioners, as well as interview a commissioner, and then, I believe, have a photo op with the commissioner, which we'll arrange for the interviews and the photo op at a later time. But if, is there a representative from the Boys and Girls Club here? Darnell, if you'll come forward and you can maybe make a few more comments and introduce your three young folks you have with you this morning.
Thank you very much, sir. My name is DJ Jones. I'm the executive vice president of the Boys and Girls Club of Coastal Plains.
Oh, you mic up a little bit.
The Boys and Girls Club of Coastal Plains. Currently, we have seven, seventeen units in seven counties. Pitt County being one, we have five units here in Pitt County. We've grown tremendously over the last four years because of the support of our local community, including our government, business leaders, and also individuals of our community. Today, we have three young people with us, outstanding young people that represent some of our clubs and kids here in Pitt County, that will come before you to speak a little bit about their club experience or an issue that youth may be facing here in the community. So I'm gonna start first with Mr. DeShawn Donald. He's a member of our Jarvis unit, which is located inside Jarvis Methodist Church.
Good morning.
My name is DeShawn Donald. I've been given the opportunity to speak in front of you all about my experience at the Boys and Girls Club. I started attending Jarvis Boys and Girls Club at the age of eight in 2009. When I first arrived, I didn't know anyone. However, as I continued to attend, I began to make friends. After several years, I started becoming more outgoing and active. I found various ways to volunteer around the club. I would assist the younger members with their homework or in playing a game. The Boys and Girls Club offered many learning programs such as Street Smarts, group discussion for teens to focus on handling problems at home or in school, Power Hour, an hour of academic time to focus on homework, Stop, Drop and Read, Summer Reading and Enrichment Program, and Seven Habits, which is a newer program that assists teens in becoming more positive. All of the programs previously listed enables the club members to become more academically, socially, and culturally secure in their environment. The years at the Jarvis Boys and Girls Club has impacted my life in many ways. I've been exposed to various opportunities with speaking in front of people and attended different functions. However, my greatest accomplishment is being named the Youth of the Year for my unit several times. Each Boys and Girls Club unit selects at least one youth to represent their club for the National Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, Your Race. Thankfully, this year, I've been selected to attend NCACC Youth Summit. This will be a wonderful opportunity and experience. I look forward to having a great time at this event. Thank you and God bless.
We have Ms. Renisha Staten. She's from our Farmville unit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Renisha Staten, and I'm a rising sophomore at Farmville Central High School. And I'm here to talk about a facing, a facing issue in our county. And what I've seen every day is peer pressure. And what about that is peer pressure is an issue because you shouldn't have to pressure somebody to do something they want to do. And one of them is gangs that I see being in high school and a few in middle school. And I know a couple of people that are in gangs, and they pressure people to not, you know, not be their best, you know. You know, they could be their best. I know a couple of athletes that are in gangs, and they try to not overwhelm it, but sometimes it pressures them to do bad. But another issue we're facing is also bullying. I've represented bullying sometimes in high school, and I think that should be an issue that we could fix by having programs to help us and overcome it. And also, being at the Boys and Girls Club, I've seen bullying with the little kids and being a helper with the six to eight and nine to eleven and assisting them. Sometimes they pick on them. They get a problem wrong, get homework, they get out in a game, you know. But it's an issue that we could overcome if we just work together and...
And finally, Ms. Talia Barrow from our, Barrow from our Jack Minjus unit located in Winnebago.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Talia Barrow. Thank you for having me. This morning, I'll be talking to you about the importance of family. The denotation of family is as follows: "Of the descendants of a common ancestor." But my connotation for the term "family" is those who love and care for you, those you trust, and are there for you when you need them, and even sometimes when you don't want them to be there. No, because like we all had those moments. So no, I don't define family by blood. That is because sometimes the connection with friends is stronger than biological family. Some may have a different view, but that's okay because it's my speech and it's my opinion that I'm voicing. Family is the most important thing to me after God. I have a large family, and I love each and every one of them. My grandmother had six children. I have four uncles, an aunt, and then there's my mom. And they each had at least two children, and then some of them had children. So I have like a really big family, and that's just on my mom's side. With my blood relatives, I have the traditional aunts, uncles, and cousins, nieces, and nephews, you know, the basics. However, my non-blood relatives consist of friends from school that I grew up with and friends from the Boys and Girls Club. At Boys and Girls Club, I not only have brothers and sisters, but also maternal figures. Those are people who like keep me in line, you know. I see them as like one of my parents. The connection between us is like adhesion with water. And that's like when water sticks to itself or together or like at the same time. We look out for each other. It's nice to know that someone has your back and your best interest at heart, not just like a temporary friendship, but a new family member. I have learned so much about teamwork, and I'm also better at understanding those who think differently than me. Because of the Boys and Girls Club, I have been afforded many opportunities. For example, I have the opportunity to speak in front of you all today. I'm also a part of a program called Career Launch. It's an amazing program, more like an opportunity, if you will. I'm learning more about planning for my future career along with how to get there, also learning about scholarship offers. I am planning to go to enlist into the Marine Corps after I graduate, and it's also nice to know that because I am going to be, I want to take some college classes, and it's also nice to know that I'm not gonna go in with student debt and student loans. But that's just one of the many opportunities I have at the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of your day.
Again, on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, we would like to thank you for this opportunity, and we look forward to visiting you all again. Thank you very much.
We certainly want to thank you and those three young people for that fine presentation. We look forward to seeing them at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting in Durham. So again, congratulations. We have a motion for the service awards.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for the presentation of the service award in favor, let it know. Opposed?
Good morning. Once again, we are for you to present service awards to the employees of our organization, Pitt County Government. And this morning, we're gonna recognize the categories of five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five years. So if we can hold our applause till the conclusion of each category, that'll help us to go along a little quicker. We have two five-year employees today. We have Nathan Hollingsworth with the Sheriff's Office, if he's here, if he'll come forward. And they'll get a certificate of appreciation and a pen.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Travis White, Sheriff's Office.
Congratulations, Travis.
Appreciate it.
That's our five-year category. In ten years, we have Robert Armstrong, Sheriff's Office. Shante Carson, Social Services. You wanna get a picture with the chairman? Here, let's get you taken, stand here next to the chairman. Daniel Hughes, Sheriff's Office. And Troy Martin, Sheriff's Office. That's our ten-year category. Fifteen years, we have three individuals. Tamatha Braddy, Social Services. Donnie Bullock, Solid Waste. And Donald Elliott, Manager's Office. Twenty years, we have Portia Nicole Hall Wilkins, Human Resources. And the silver box, again, as we always explain, represents the achievement of twenty years and their selection of a watch to commemorate their twenty years. And watch their next twenty years. Christopher Singleton, Detention Center. Chad Singleton, sorry.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You deserve it.
You wanna get a picture with?
Sure.
We got a lot of cameras clicking. And our third twenty years, Wanda Streeter, Public Health. One more applause. And we have one twenty-five-year recognition this morning. That's for Christine Adams in Social Services.
I made it.
Do you still have your watch?
Yes, I do. Thank you. My daughter wants to take it first. This is my daughter, Harley. Thank you.
There will be a reception to my right back in the County Commissioners chambers, and so we ask that you please go at this time and enjoy yourself with the refreshments. Thank you very much. Welcome back. I understand that we have no one sign up for the public address to the board, so at this time, we'll proceed with Kathy Booker, the 2017 Tax Collection Report.
Thank you and good morning. The Pitt County Combined Collection Rate for Real and Personal Property for Fiscal Years 16, 17 ended at 99.19. Last year, the year-end, it ended at 99, which we were thrilled because 99 was an all-time high, and we have actually topped it this year at 99.19. And it is the, it is the whole team, the whole Tax Administration team that works together to achieve this great success. And so I especially want to thank Raymond Revilla, who prepares this report for me each and every month, and his staff. And I also want to thank Chip Main and his staff on the assessor side, because these two offices work very closely together and help one another to achieve this. So it's a celebration for the county as well as for Tax Administration Office as a whole. Thank you. I have two graphs here, and I wanted to explain something to you on the two graphs. If you'll notice this line graph, the first graph you have, you'll see up at the top the 99.19. We limit that to three years, so it tried to keep it from getting so busy. But they basically all follow along the same line. But this is the line for the graph, and you'll notice that the next one is your bar graph. And if you'll look at the last bar graph, well, all the way across since the state has been doing motor vehicles, you'll see the 99%. That is the rate that they give us to use for the motor vehicle collection. So we use that. When we are, our rate is below the 99%, that 99% motor vehicle rate will cause the rate to pull us up a little bit. Last year, at year-end, when it was all 99%, there was no effect, because if we have 99 and the state has 99, it has no effect. But as you can see, in the last year, we were at 99.19, and the 99 that we use from the state makes the difference between the 99.17, and that's the difference in the rates And I ask for...
Close to 100.
I wish we could, but there's absolutely no way that you can get to 100.
Motion to approve the report.
Has been moved and properly seconded. We approve the report. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those oppose? I'll say. You up again, Kathy?
Yes, sir. The next is the Annual Settlement for Taxes for Fiscal Year 16, 17. And again, I've asked Raymond to step up here because he prepares this, and he prepares it by the North Carolina General Statutes. This is a summation of everything that we do in the office, and he's even broken it down into graphs for you, like the collection report at the end. And we would like to know if there are any questions about the annual settlement statement. Then we would ask for approval.
I made for approval.
I second.
Moving properly seconded, we approve. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Hold up both. I'll say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also now, Ms. Booker, the Pitt County Tax Administration Property Record Card building sketch.
We gave you some information in your packet on the property record card. We have always had a property record card, but we have never had one out on the web. And I'm getting ready to show you the clip. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the clip that was sent to you, but I'm getting ready to show that to you again. We are very excited about this. It is a very nice property record card. You have two options. You can do a compact print and get one page, or you can do a non-compact and get the one of the sketch and the photo that was in your packet. Also, we wanted to thank Public Information for helping us get this out to the public. Mike and Carla and Kyle have been great to work with on this project, and we're happy with what they produced for us. One other thing that is very important on this property record card, because very few counties in the state have this, it has an option on there that you will see that you can, if you have a question or a concern or think something's not correct on the, when you're looking at your property record card, you can contact the office and it'll come straight into us, which we will deliver to an appraiser. So we are very excited to present this to you.
Pitt County Government strives to serve our residents as fast and efficiently as possible. Now, for the first time ever, Pitt County Tax Administration has made a vast amount of information available to the public on any property in Pitt County, all from your computer or mobile devices. The new property record search has become your one-stop service to search, find, and print an easy-to-read comprehensive record list for any property in Pitt County. With just a few simple clicks, you can find important information such as property values, building dimensions, deeds, and even map views. Interactive features on the property record search also allow you to directly connect with Pitt County Tax Administration to request any changes to the property's dimensions or amenities. While making the commitment to service the public through the new avenues that technology provides, Pitt County Tax Administration can always be reached by phone at 252-902-3400 or in person at our office at 110 Evans Street in Greenville.
I hope you enjoyed the presentation. I have to thank Chip Main here and Russell Hill and Lester Poppy in MAS for making this as nice as it was.
So this is in addition to OPUS?
Yes. It has a link to OPUS. It has a link to Register of Deeds on there as well. And a link to us, which gives the public a better avenue if they have a question. They can just submit a question right to us. It helps with correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one question, Mr. ...
Okay.
As Mr. Garrison alluded, this is in addition to other modes that we have, but is this gonna cost the tax department any more money to be friendly?
Uh, yes.
You gonna need another employee?
No, sir. No, sir. We have employees who have to answer calls and fax these out all the time, so that will cut down on that. Also, it, we had it all along, but they had to come into the office. This, they can do from their home.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, at this time, we have the Candlewick Sewer Project change road.
I think Ms. Booker's still live streaming here. Let's see if we can get the other map up. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, at your last meeting, you did approve the award of the construction contract for the Candlewick Sewer Project, and this has been a long-running project. We're glad to get this underway, and since that time, the contract has been executed by the number of parties that are involved, that being the county as well as TA Loving, our contractor. Just to orient you a little bit, this is the area we'll be serving. The force main, of course, runs along Stanton's Park Road. You'll see that in the red. It does traverse the corridor for the Southwest Bypass, and the Candlewick Sanitary District shone in gold. You can see only a subset of that is being serviced by this first grant. Remember, we did secure Community Development Block Grant infrastructure for infrastructure improvements back about three years ago. That needs to be closed out next year. All that said, to help service the remainder of the area, again, you can see only the red area. About 15 households will receive sewer service with this first grant cycle. We are now eligible if the commissioners agree to service the applicant for the grant once again. We will be eligible this year to go ahead and apply for an additional $2 million to help service an additional area in this particular development. So today's, this is just an update, but we would like to get concurrence from the board as to whether we should move forward with scheduling a public hearing to start this next grant cycle phase. And if so, we're recommending, from staff's perspective, a public hearing on August 21st. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have to share on this item.
Mr. Manager?
If I can say a comment, if you choose to hold the public hearing and apply for the grant funds, keep in mind, the public hearing would be to look at the potential of using the grant funds anywhere in Pitt County, even though you may choose to target Candlewick for the next phase. You may get public comments from folks saying, hey, we'd like you to consider area X, Y, or Z. Just want the board to realize that. I'm not, that's no reason not to hold the public hearing. I recommend you hold the public hearing, but I mean, by default, I think you would want to target Candlewick, but just wanted to say that.
Does that mean that it's gonna, if that happens, you come back to the board and ask them if you want to decide that?
You ultimately will make the decision when the application is filed, where it will be filed for, whether it's Candlewick or otherwise.
What you want here is a public hearing. I move we have that public. I move we have that public hearing.
It's been moving properly second that we have the public hearing. Uh, all in favor of the said motion, that'd be known by right, right hand? Those approve?
Thank you.
As have it. Thank you. Manager reporting, Scott.
Ms. Chairman, just a few things to report on. Your next meeting dates, the month of August, will be back to a normal meeting rotation, the first and third Monday, um, August seventh and the twenty-first at nine AM and six PM. Um, if Wanda Uhas will come to the podium real quick, or slowly, ta, ta, take your time. We'd like to, we have the honor of, I know this has already been in the, the media, the newspaper and, and whatnot, but we did want to recognize Wanda. She was named the two thousand seventeen North Carolina Economic Development Director of the Year, and we wanted the, the board to be able to recognize her and congratulate her.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Wanda, anything you want to say?
It's a lot easier to be Economic Developer of the Year if you work in Pitt County and have the people to work with and the product to work with that we have than if you were somewhere else.
Last item is the um, just to remind you, the joint meeting that's scheduled with the Greenville City Council, we have nailed down August seventeenth, five-thirty to seven. Um, this is not a dinner meeting, um, and this is right now, we have a, locations to be, to be determined, but we have um designated Shepherd Memorial Library as a location. Also wanted to point out to you um, one of the requirements that the city has for their meetings, whether it's a regular meeting, a special meeting, or a joint meeting. And that is their, their policy is to have a thirty-minute public comment period prior to the meeting, um, of which anybody can come in and speak on any topic. And we asked them to make an exception and waive that, since this is not a normal meeting situation. But um, I think they've had some situations in the past where they'd actually put this in writing, have created the policy, and they're saying that this is um, they are unable, are not willing to, to waive that. I've talked to the manager, our attorney has talked to the city attorney. Um, so we just want you to be aware of that and make sure that you're comfortable proceeding going forward with this joint meeting, knowing you're gonna have to, before the meeting starts or at the start of the meeting, there would be a thirty-minute public comment period of which either, I mean, speakers are allowed three minutes, just like our, you, you allow, or you could have thirty people come and speak for one minute.
And it may be a possibility, they may not have anyone to sign up. Yes, is that?
Sure.
Let me proceed.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the items for consent as altered.
I second that.
Has been moved in properly second that we accept the item for consent. I think with the exception of item one, that we would have some discussion on. Those in favor, that'd be known by raising right hand? Those approve. Okay. Motion approved. This time we have uh, uh, item number one, budget amendment, um, Commissioner Garrus, you would like to comment on it?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity. This is something that uh I've wrestled with over the weekend, and uh I really wanted to kind of just gloss this over and approve it with all the other items, but my conscience would not allow me to do that. This is a program uh where we've received a grant, if we approve it, uh, in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Sexual Health Initiative for Teens, commonly known as SHIFT. I was first made aware of this uh back in um April, I believe it was, uh, back in March, really. And I was very concerned about it because this citizen was expressing a major concern about it. So I called Mrs. Elliott, uh, our Department of Social Services Director, and had a lengthy discussion with her on this subject. The bottom line is, uh, this program is not for all of our youth, it is for a certain segment of our youth. And what the intent of this program, as I understand from Mrs. Elliott, is to teach them, first of all, about abstinence, which I am totally supportive of. But this program also recognizes that that probably isn't going to happen with most of our youth. So they then accept the fact that our youth are going to be act, actively involved, and then they, as I understand, teach them uh how to uh, for, how to have what they say is safe sex. Uh, and I, I'm not even comfortable talking about this subject in public, but I, since it's on our agenda, I felt like I needed to talk about it. And for me, uh, you know, you're teaching the use of condoms and all this stuff, and I just cannot support uh our dollars going towards that kind of program. Uh, I am a strong supporter of abstinence, and I think that's what we need to teach our children, and I don't think that we should accept that as not being valid, not being uh implementable, and then go on and teach them how to be involved in sex. I ca, I cannot support that. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion.
I wanna have a discussion.
Okay, fine. And I may not get a second. If I don't get a second, then we don't need to further discuss it. We can just go on and do what the board wants to do. But I'm gonna go on and make a motion to see if we get a second. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we not approve this budget amendment.
Okay. Has been moved that we not approve, there's a second.
I'll second it.
Has been moved in proper to second that we do not approve this. All in favor of the said motion, of, of discussion at this time?
Yes, I have discussion.
Okay.
I respect your comment about that, Mr. Garrus, Commissioner Garrus. And I also respect the fact that uh it is appropriate uh to teach abstinence. But in all actuality, it's not going to happen. In that case, because we are filled with a lot of teenage pregnancies, hormones are gonna continue to raise, and so they need to know how to handle certain things and certain emotions and aspects of their bodies and their natural recourse. If we don't teach, and I, and I, and the reason I feel so strong about this, um, I took a similar course like that, that was first being taught by Dr. Andrew A. Best in health education, and all of us, it was during a time when it was segregated schools. And uh, all of us crowded into Epps High School gym. And this is where he talked about abstinence and questioned uh us as children. And that was my first exposure, because I have uh, uh, very religious parents. My father is a minister, my mother's a deaconess. And so they didn't feel like I need to be taught that because you keep your dress down and that sort of thing. But my fact is, is that when he asked the question as to be honest, and he would not punish who does not consider or is not considering it, and there wasn't a hand in the audience. So if we don't give them good practice for that, and um, then we're gonna end up with the thing that we had with Dr. Morrow that says, um, senior citizens are the largest group of sexual transmitted diseases. And we'll have it then with the children. We're gonna pay either upfront or in the end. And the end product with youth is, since uh Beth and I maybe can't produce more children, I said maybe, Beth.
Speak for yourself.
I said, I said, I said maybe, Beth. And um, then that means that there will be a lot of teenage pregnancies, pregnancies, and we're gonna pay for it on the end, through social services, through uh, uh, all the agencies, even court, 'cause you gotta find someone to pay for the babies. We, 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 we cannot teach them the proper way. And some parents still have the problem of addressing sex education, and they don't have the background themselves to do it. So I for one cannot support that motion, because I think education is the best method of preventing pregnancies, when you know what to do uh beforehand, and, and it can help on a lot of other ends. So to not teach and to not do it is a worse problem than doing it. And besides, to put the five thousand to excellent use is worth having. Do, do you know what I'm trying to say?
I know exactly what you're trying to say. Since she addressed me, may I respond?
Yes.
Uh, I, and I respect your opinion, Mary, I really do. And I think education is the key, but for me, the education is abstinence. I cannot accept the fact that since our kids are gonna be, or our children, our youth, are gonna be involved, that we need to further teach them how to do it and provide the instruments for them to do it. I cannot, I just cannot support that. And I respectfully also uh understand your position, and I'm sure you understand mine, and we can discuss this for the rest of the day, and I'm not gonna change you, and you're not gonna change me.
Okay. But I don't think it teaches how to. That comes naturally.
Well, I, that is, uh, it was my understanding from uh, I wish she was in here.
Who, Jane?
Yes.
She's here, sitting right over there.
Uh, that, that, didn't you tell me it taught them how to use condoms?
That is a portion of the class.
That's a, that's a portion of it, sure.
That is a portion of the class.
That is a portion of it.
We, we believe that if you're gonna prevent STDs, STD, woo, I can't talk today, STDs, then you need to understand proper usage. But it's a whole lot more than just that. I mean, this is a whole lot more than just that.
I understand that, that is, that is a part of it that I cannot accept, because again, it accepts the fact that our youth are going to be involved in it. So let me now teach you how to be involved, so-called, safely.
Right, right, right. Uh, and, 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 and I understand here what you're talking about. Uh, the, the, and if, can I kind of explain kind of how we got here? 'Cause some folks may know and some may not know.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, we were, uh, thi, this particular program, Making Proud Choices, which is the name of the curriculum, uh, was identified as the curriculum that would be used in North Carolina. This one is specifically used uh for children in foster care. It's trauma-focused, trauma-based. Uh, it is also for youth that are coming through the juvenile court settings. These are children who are typically out of home. Uh, and so we are working with the children around all things that they need to be talked about. Uh, that was piloted in Wilson County several years ago. Uh, we were given the first five thousand dollars in the fifteen-sixteen budget in the last quarter. Uh, af, and that was given to us, we, we were brought in late. There are three or four other counties in northeastern North Carolina doing this with foster children. We were brought in late, so the budget document for sixteen-seventeen had already been done before that money was applied. So this is in fact the fourth installment in this year's bud, this past year's budget, the last installment in this past year's budget of twenty, for the total twenty thousand dollars. It is already in this year's budget that's been adopted for twenty thousand dollars. Um, but Wilson piloted, they found it to be very good for the children. Uh, there's a lot of pre and post-testing, a lot of things going on. Uh, the goal is to focus first and foremost on healthy relationships. Abstinence is a piece of that, delaying pregnancies a piece of that, STD prevention's a piece, piece of that. Goal setting, what do you want to be? Where do you want to get there? How do you want to get there? All of that is part of that curriculum. It's a basically a one-week curriculum. It can be, depending on how many hours you work at at a time. We have explored other options. We've incorporated some of the recommendations that have been made by others into how we're handling some of this. Uh, but there is, it's a very, we have to be trained and certified to do this. You can't even miss one of the training sessions and be a certified trainer. You've got to go through the whole process. We had our first group, they were circa sixteen to twenty years old. They were high-risk youth, many of them who were already out in the world, some of them had been sex-trafficked. Uh, and uh, they learned a lot. There's a pre and post-test. Unfortunately, I didn't know I was gonna be speaking this morning, or I could have given you that information. Uh, we have our foster parents and our parents, if they're involved with the children, the parents are also knowing about this. Um, let's see. Uh, we have also, um, the grant pays for staff, training, for activities for the students, supplies, and, and there is a celebration, a graduation ceremony at the end of this. The kids learned a lot, and I will not publicly tell you some of the questions that came up and some of the answers that were given, but you would've thought this group would have known more than they did, and they had some very bad information. Um, uh, lots of folks don't understand how you can get an STD, and, and, and so there was a lot of learning going on. Um, yes, you know, i, i, in a real world, I'd like to focus on just this aspect, but it's not, you know, the world is much different than that. And, and, and my kids, these are my children, I consider these my children while they're in my care, these are my children. They've got to be able to make it in the world, and they've got to not be tied down with the children that they're not prepared to have, and I don't want them to have an STD either. And so, yes, I may be giving them information I may not have wanted to give my child at age ten, and I'm not giving it to these children at age ten. These are sixteen to twenty-year-olds. We will have another group that will probably be a little younger, but they will get a slightly different curriculum. So, I mean, we're trying to gear the curriculums to the age of the children, but all of it is gonna include abstinence, STDs, goal setting, the same stuff. How you might do it might look a little different, but the same stuff's gonna be there. 'Cause that's, I mean, again, kids are being prostituted, kids are being, I mean, it's, it's terrible out there. Some of them, their own parents are involved in this. So it's my, I need to do this for my children. And again, it's already in this year's budget, and it was, this is the last five thousand dollars of last year's budget.
Thank, thank you very much, Ms. Ms. Moore.
Get a little passionate.
Um, this has already been going on. Um, I don't think that I, I, um, as a commissioner, can give my personal opinion on this. I think it is imperative that we understand, if I understand the money is not Pitt County tax money. Um, I also understand, and you reiterated that, that we're talking about children and young people who are already in trouble. Um, if nothing else, but the fact that they're foster children. They are not with their parents. Um, some of them are juvenile delinquents who have been arrested for whatever reason, and it may have something to do with this. Uh, we have already been doing this. Three times, this will be the fourth, or the fir, one time?
We had one, we had one class.
Okay, but, but it's the third year for doing this. So, and I honestly, to me, this is just a drop in the bucket. And I totally support it and will uh vote in favor of it. And I think us personally giving our opinion about this issue, uh, this is not maybe the forum for it to be. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Flah.
Yes, I had one question for Ms. Elliott, but I think she answered it, but I'd like to have an insur, uh, your assurance that no child below the age of sixteen is currently being indoctrinated in this manner.
I can't give you that assurance. What I said was the first class was sixteen to twenty.
Then we'll go after.
We will be working with younger children, because children, I have children who were getting birth at age eleven.
That's right.
So I will be going down to a younger group if my little gift, but we will be talking with younger groups. I'm not in this one place. But we will be working with our kids.
It'll get there eventually, I'm sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do agree with Mr. Garrus, because abstinence is only, the only one-hundred-percent effective way to avoid STDs and pregnancies. But when you look at the, uh, the kids that are involved, that are being taught here, uh, they could probably tell stories that would embarrass us all. And I came from a stable home, I got the talk from my parents, I'm still living with that trauma today. And uh, I have passed that trauma along to my children. But um, but they don't have that, and we're not talking about grabbing uh little leaguers with a normal nuclear family uh out of their game to give them a talk on how to properly engage in sex in a safe manner. But when we listen to Dr. Morrow, and we listen to our STD rates, and it was just a few years ago, we were number one in and it was just a few years ago, we were number one in teen pregnancies. I don't know if we still are. And as someone personally who is unapologetically pro-life, I think there is value in preventing pregnancies that would most likely end in that kind of operation. And so I'll support the five thousand dollars just on the practical level of these aren't folks that have a stable family home and as Ms. Elliott mentioned, you're talking about kids who have been sex trafficked. You're talking about kids who have probably already engaged in some type of activity. And I think that there is value in making sure that we are, they're at least getting correct information and not operating on bad information. Out of a life that has been one-hundred percent trauma, they are already statistically in a very bad position. And I think it's, if you're, have a child as a teenager, you have a over ninety percent chance of living the rest of your life in poverty. And I think that there is value in us trying to take people who are already in a statistical hole for where they'll end up in life and prevent that from getting even deeper. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've had discussion. He ain't know the discussion goes in favor again of the said motion by Commissioner Garrus. It'll be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed? Motion fails by Jim and it is confirmed that we will move on with this.
I move for approval. Second?
It has been moved in proper second that we approve now the consent agenda. All in favor? It'll be known by raising your right hand.
Are we voting on the consent agenda or this one item?
We've already voted on just this item.
All in favor of this said item? Raise your right hand, please.
We're voting on the consent agenda.
No, we've already voted on the consent and we're voting on the motion.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Moving now to the resolution, expressing concern with unfunded federal and state mandates. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on page one oh five of your agenda package, you'll see as a result of the budget workshops, actually the public hearing on the budget that was held on June the sixth, you directed staff to draft a resolution expressing concern with unfunded mandates, whether from a state or federal government level. We have contacted the NCC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and got a variety of resolutions that other counties have passed and tried to kind of put together some statements and then interjected some of the points that we had during the budget workshops on what unfunded mandates were costing us in Pitt County. So before you, you have a draft of the resolution and we're seeking any board input or if you're satisfied the way it is, you could adopt it the way it is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had two observations. Number one, and the second, whereas, where it says, the sentence goes on to say, accounted on by local governments and have moved services previously by state governments. It looks to me like a previously provided should be in there. And then my second observation is on the last, therefore, that therefore focuses on additional financial burden. What I am also interested in doing is getting some relief from the current financial burden they've already imposed on us. So I would, my thought would be that in the, next to the last line where it says burdens on local government, I would insert and that they assume from the counties, the unfunded mandates previously referred to that have already been passed down to the counties. Because I wanted to do something about that fifteen point nine million dollars that we already burdened with.
I think both of those are good ideas. I'd like, you want to move to add those?
Yeah, I will move to do that. And then let me just say also, my thought was that after that statement I just made, that would be a period. And then we would say counties are currently strained and cannot. And I don't see any need of that, those last five words in the coming fiscal year because it's henceforth and evermore as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I meant for that to be stricken out, but it didn't come.
Very good. There are my thoughts.
I'll second this motion with all of that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add one addition. That would be in the sixth, whereas, where it gives the total. If we could just include after that which accounts for and then give the amount of the tax rate. So at fifteen point nine, that's going to be somewhere at almost fifteen cent on the taxpayers' tax rate is to account for unfunded mandates.
Okay.
I'll accept that addition if you will.
All right. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering, is there any way that we could put a little bit more bite in this resolution with identifying some of the bills that apply to some of these that we're talking about, some of these?
I thank you, everybody.
Whereas, you know, is this manager?
Right, I mean, I guess you could when we're, the whereas, talking about the fifteen point nine million. We broke it into three areas, education, public health, and DSS. I guess we could try to identify some of the statutes or the laws that actually mandated, if you wanted to be more specific in that matter. We'd need to do some research to.
I think you've got a good point. You lay out specifically what you're talking about.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Colson?
Well, you know, back in two thousand, there was money coming into the county and they called it, I'm trying to think of the exact name, reimbursements. And these reimbursements came about because the state at the legislative level had done some things that interrupted revenue that came to the county that the county was expecting and also municipalities. And if I remember correctly, some of you that were on the board before me might remember the exact number, but I believe it's about three point two or three point five million dollars that was coming to the county as reimbursements. When the state got in trouble, the first thing that Governor Easley did is he looked at that and said, whoops, we're going to get rid of that. And so that was cut. So to your point, there would be a long laundry list of items over the years to where, not even addressed here. This is just more of the same, what they've done. I think that three point million dollars that was supposed to be given to the counties forever. Of course, as we all have found out, anything that a legislature does is non-binding on future legislations or legislatures. Three point two million dollars times seventeen years. You know, and when we look at the fifteen point nine million, just Pitt County. Let's assume that Pitt County is an average county. Some are smaller than us and some are way bigger than us. So just think of us being average. If fifteen point nine million is an average number and we have a hundred counties, when the legislature sits up there, and I don't care whether Democrat or Republican, and they puff out their chest and pull their suspenders out and say, look what we have done to save money and they have a budget surplus of five hundred million dollars, no, 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 you don't. You have a budget deficit of one billion dollars that you've pushed off onto the counties. And we're not even talking about municipalities because they have been victims of the same thing. What I would ask, Ginger, could you get, once the wording is completely done, could you convince the newspaper to print this in total? So that people that read the newspaper could read this and see it. Rather than it dying on, you know, after we pass it and then it's long forgotten. I would love to see it become a record in there. If that's not possible, then I would like to make a motion that once it's passes, and I suspect that the board is going to pass this in its final form, that we pay the newspaper, like an advertisement, to put it in there, to go on record and say, this is a problem. And I think if we do that, it'll give it a little bit more credence. Our legislators will have to take a little bit more notice as to the fact of, you know, this isn't just something came up here, we read it, part of it, threw it in the trash and then forgot about it. Like I suspect many things that our resolutions do when they go to the legislature. But it is a problem and we do need to do something about this.
And my reason for saying this is so that our delegation can see what their actions actually did to us here in Pitt County. I mean, it will put a face to it, I think. That's my reason for suggesting that. I don't know, you know, if you think it's too involved or.
Could we maybe identify an example in each area?
Yes.
Because otherwise the list could be.
Yeah, yes, yes, an example.
That'll be good.
Are there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, with that, what we could do is allow us to take this back and to tweak it based upon your comments this morning and then put it back on your next agenda. The board's agreeable to that?
And if I could say one other thing on this.
Yes, sir.
It's not unrelated to the education lottery. I was against it. I suspect the people that were against it at the time is they recognized that the state, like every other state, has taken that money and used it on another purpose. And so the state lottery funds, how many millions of dollars do they owe us? And it's not in this. That's not even part of this. So this only addresses a portion of the burden that the state legislature is putting on the counties. Can you imagine if we as the county commissioners had voted to build a lot of school infrastructure and expected the revenue from the lottery monies to come in and pay for it? Thank goodness we didn't do that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, you still have a motion on the floor that was made by Mr. Garrison, seconded by Ms. Ward. I don't know if they want to withdraw that motion or if you want to modify it. The motion was to approve it as the amendments were suggested by Mr. Garrison.
I think we could modify it. I'd be willing to, with the suggestions.
And for staff to incorporate those suggestions and bring it back at your next meeting for further consideration and action?
Yes.
Yes.
It has been moved by Commissioner Ward?
No, by Mr. Garrison.
Commissioner Garrison and seconded with the modification and bring back to us by the manager's office in the near future. Those in favor of the said motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, the item for discussion, consideration of license plate agency in the tax administration office. Scott, you're on with that one and Kathy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, this item's on the agenda. Commissioner Farley has asked us to look at the feasibility of locating an LPA or a license plate agency within the tax office. So I think Ms. Booker has transmitted via two memos, one a couple of months ago and then one this past week, information regarding this. She has also done some research, been to Edgecombe County, been to Brunswick County. And her and her staff would like to present a list of factors to consider if the board wanted to look at the advantages and disadvantages of such an operation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Booker.
Thank you. We did visit the Edgecombe County office and the office in Brunswick County. We have talked with the state and the North Carolina DMV have questioned them on questions that you've asked. We've questioned them and we've also talked to the Department of Revenue and they have provided us with a PowerPoint presentation. We included pictures of both offices so that you could see those offices and the two, the one at Farmville and the one out on Stanton'sburg in Rivergate Shopping Center.
There is none at Rivergate, ma'am. No.
When you say Rivergate, is that the one that the Food Line Shopping Center is and the medical district? Yes, the state does have a private contractor who operates an LPA in that shopping center.
There's a picture included.
It's marked as Exhibit Rivergate.
Is there a different name of that shopping center other than Rivergate?
Rivergate's by Hastings Ford in my district. There is no LPA anywhere.
Okay, the medical district where Food Line is?
We probably got that off of a card, yes. But it is the one where Food Line is.
I can tell you the state refers to that as the LPA at Stanton Square. That's how the state refers to that.
We just picked it up off of a card, wrong. Sorry. But I have been out there myself. We've had other people being, they have been in the one at Farmville. There are a list of considerations for you to consider. The application itself, if you submit it, they will put it out to private people in the county. The location, if we have to meet size requirements and space requirements and those were in your packet as well. And the state will also be more concerned about the profitability. They don't, they want everybody to be profitable, but they don't want it to be at the risk of the two that are already in operation. They don't want us to be in competition with them. And staffing, we did double-check on that. There's absolutely no co-mingling of money. As far as a handicap, we do have to have a handicap. We asked them, could that not be at the window and be at a side office? And the gentleman at the North Carolina DMV said he would not, they would not give us a decision on that unless we had an approved application and then they would come out and actually look at the office to see that we had enough space for storage, parking, and a handicap. Do you have any questions?
I think there were other factors that, some documentation that Kathy had submitted. We put the factor that a convenient one-stop, this would result in a convenient one-stop for taxpayers where they could address issues with, you know, the site issues, value issues and other concerns with vehicle bills. So there is advantages of having an LPA in the tax office at that, at one location. I think if we were building a new building and parking right now at the tax office is a major problem for taxpayers trying to pay their property taxes. One of the concerns I have issuing, interjecting an LPA operation in there is that we're going to start getting bless your hearts or criticisms that here we're opening an office but yet we're not providing adequate parking for the folks to get in and out of there. Another concern I have is that the board has talked a lot about mandates and I realize this is not a mandate such as a federal state mandate, but this would be assuming a state responsibility that they primarily contract with private vendors to do. Obviously, we have one private vendor at the Stanton'sburg Shopping Center and one municipal entity acting as a vendor in Farmville. Another concern we've identified is the fact that the tax office has gotten their collection rate up to ninety-nine point one nine percent. And there was some sentiment expressed that through tag and tax that went into effect, how many years ago?
Thirteen, two thousand thirty.
So four plus years ago, that maybe there's, staff has extra idle time on his hands and could easily take on the, this function. But actually, that staff that was doing tag and tax responsibilities is now doing enforcement actions, whether bank attachments, help me, foreclosures, garnishments, all those actions, which has gotten you up to the ninety-nine point one nine. So if we introduce this function without additional staff, will that, could that rate slide back? Maybe, maybe not. Just wanted to point out those, I mean, there would be a factors to consider if the board wanted to go in this direction. Again, if we're building a new building and we could, you know, the best case scenario, if we could have an independent area under tax that folks could go be serviced, but right now they're constrained in the location they have, not only inside the building but outside the building in terms of parking.
Each one of the counties that we talked to said in the first year of operation, you do not expect profitability. And then afterwards, they have a break-even analysis on it.
One other point, we had the town of Winterville, an individual down there was trying to open an LPA. license plate agency as a private individual, actually had a building that he was, I think he made application formally to the state.
Yes.
And as far as we can tell, he was denied. We're, we're having a, I, I have a call into the, the contact down there that had sent some correspondence, but I did not get a returned phone call. I think maybe Commissioner Garrison, you may have spoke to somebody down there, but if, if another LPA is warranted in Pitt County, I think it'd make more sense to have it maybe in the southern portion where the center of our population is, rather than in downtown Greenville. I would lend more support to having one in Winterville rather than in our own tax office.
Or Aiden.
Or Aiden, sure.
Or Aiden, which will help with the...
Ms. Chairman, the points that I was going to make, Scott has essentially made them. Number one, we just got through passing this resolution about the state passing stuff down to us, and now we are saying, hey, let us do this. And I, I think that I have, I have a problem with that. And then the second issue I have is if the private sector can manage something for government, I think we need to let them do it rather than us assuming it. And the private sector is interested in another LPA, as Scott mentioned. There was a gentleman over in Winterville that made the application. It was denied. Then he sent me an email asking me to assist him in whatever way I could. I called the license agency in Raleigh and talked with a, a, a person up there that was very nice, very helpful, and she gave me some suggestions for him to follow up with, and I gave those to him, and he's private sector, and he said he was going to follow up. Now, this was back in April, and I haven't heard from him since. But if the private sector can handle it, and I do agree, and he pointed out in his email to me that it would be nice to have one in Winterville that could service Aiden and Grifton and Blackjack and all those southern parts of the county, it would be very convenient.
Commissioner Hood?
I agree with you, Commissioner Garrison, that if the private business can handle it, let it do it. I also know of an interest north of the river. So that, so we do have other interests in opening it up, not just to have us take on that, that task, so.
Because that would put us in competition with the private sector, and I have a little problem with that.
Other comments? I tend to agree. I think private sectors are certainly the backbone of, of what we're trying to do in terms of moving this forward. And, and I think more people that we have within the confounded area, it would, it would just create more, more chaos. And they won't be, the private sector would not be benefiting from what we're trying to have them to do. So...
Thank you.
I certainly agree with those comments. Any other comments? And I guess we determine as to what's the favor of the board? The favor, as to how, how we, how should we proceed?
There's no motion, so we move on to the next item.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this question. All right, number thirteen items for decision, budget amendment, amendment and contract, health department, electronic medical record. Not the model. Yes, sir.
Commissioner, good morning. I'm John Reed. I'm the business officer for the Health Department. Dr. Morrow is out of place this week. This is the item that was presented to the Board of Commissioners at the Capitol Planning Meeting back in February. We were trying to get this item into the Board of Commissioners, adopted budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We had not quantified the numbers sufficiently at that point in time. We now have those numbers quantified. Dr. Morrow, I think, presented to this board last month or month before last that we were going to bring this. So we are asking to set aside two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of our fund balance to acqui- enter into an agreement with Viten Medical Center to use their electronic medical record as well as an annual maintenance fee.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Has been moved in proper to second that we approve this. Those in favor said motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Designation of voting delegate to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ann Huggins.
Ann Huggins has been nominated. They're second. Second, all those in favor of Ann Huggins being the voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference? It'll be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed, motion carries. Ann, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hurricane Matthew Floyd Recovery Effort, Sir Rose.
Good morning again. We're nine months out from Hurricane Matthew striking Pitt County in eastern North Carolina. We're currently developing what we call a comprehensive housing recovery strategy. This is pieced together from a number of different programs that are coming, both from the state and the federal governments. And just like to kind of carry you through a story this morning as far as where we're at in this recovery process and a little bit of assistance that's needed with our office to make sure folks are served properly. First up, last month, you did approve the buyout program that was really a holdover from Hurricane Irene. The funding finally came down, the contract came in, and we've got five properties that we'll be acquiring if, and remember with the buyout program, it is voluntary. These people that are part of the grant package right now may opt out if they don't feel like they're getting the appropriate amount of money or they've made accommodations already to stay on their property. So these five properties, four of which are located in Grifton, these blue dots, and then one north of the river. And this will be closed out in late twenty nineteen. The next one, of course, we just got word a couple of weeks ago of the buyout for Hurricane Matthew. Now, we submitted over seventy properties, only eleven of which were approved. The manager and I attended a meeting a couple of months ago. This really wasn't too much of a surprise, given the limited resources we had. We knew probably less than twenty-five percent would be approved. Our approval rate was about fifteen percent. Again, here in Pitt County, we were not hit as hard as some of the other places in eastern North Carolina. But the eleven properties, again, you can kind of see them in the southern part of the county. Went ahead and included, there was one approved, only one approved, in the city of Greenville, and then a few also north of the river, primarily on Stokes and Old River Road. This is pending approval. The state has identified these properties as now an approval process through FEMA, so you'll see that contract coming in a little bit later. And this, once approved, would need to be closed out in twenty twenty. The next program is the repair program. We brought this before you previously. This is for our essential family rehabilitation program, disaster recovery. And this is programming or funding that's made available through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. We've been accepting applications for this over the last several months. You may recall, we had a couple of information sessions out at the Ag Center, had a number of folks to come out for that. And in turn, we've had sixteen applicants to bring their applications in to date. Based on the income levels only, they qualify, there are a number of other items that they'll have to meet. Ensure that their owner occupied, make sure they've got a num- amount, a certain amount of damage to their homes, duplication of benefits, there's a number of items we'll need to check off with those. There is a limitation here, and that's of forty thousand dollars for site-built homes. It's even more limited for manufactured homes, and anytime, most of you are aware, if you get any type of flooding into a manufactured home above the floor elevation, most times those are not repairable for a number of reasons. So this is a limiting program. We feel like we'll be able to help out a number of us, of property owners throughout the county. And you can see the vast majority, if you drew a line along the Tar River, the vast majority of these applicants to date are north of the river. And the closeout on this would be June twenty nineteen. Something brand new that the emergency services director, Alan Everett, and I will be attending tomorrow is through the state with HUD monies that will be coming down from the federal government. This is for the community development block grant, disaster recovery. It is pending currently, the action plan is, and the way it's structured to date is about eighty percent of the two hundred million dollars that's going to be available for this will be going to those four hi- highly impacted counties. Pitt County is not one of those. Closest one to us would be Edgcombe County. But nonetheless, there may be some funding available for us here. And we talked about a comprehensive housing strategy, strategy. We've got minor repairs with our repair program. We've got the buyout program. What this does is kind of fit in between. I mentioned about manufactured homes that have had some flooding. Replacement of those, that was a program we were missing until this came along. And we're hopeful that we can get this nailed down when we go to our meeting tomorrow. Replacement housing is a big issue, and we feel like this program will help us not only do that component, but folks that want to stay in their existing homes that have a tremendous amount of repair work, over forty thousand. You can see this program goes up to seventy-five thousand. We'll be able to assist them as well. So again, hopefully by the next couple of months, we'll be in a much better shape. If you fall out of the buyout program, you may fall down to CDBG, you may fall down to the other repair program. So that gives us some options for those people that are still trying to recover. So, all that said, our initial staffing request to assist with some of these is for a housing coordinator, and this position would help us with the application process, help us also determine which programs that these people fit in best, and actually just help these people through the long ordeal of recovery. We do be, believe that at least half of the funding that's requested will be available through these various programs this first year. It is a reimbursement program. Therefore, there's going to be a lag. I feel certain that we'll have the first twenty-five thousand that will be needed for this program or this funding position within the, this fiscal year. But we are requesting a full-time equivalent position for the remainder of the year. Ms. Chairman, that's all I have to present.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to see the pleasure of the board.
Is the other fifty percent included in your budget?
Not a good response, but possibly.
Okay, that's better than no.
In talking with the finance manager, I wanted to at least acknowledge that right now there may be some general fund monies, additional general fund monies needed. If at all possible, we're going to try to piece it together with existing funding, but I'd rather be safe than sorry.
We're just going to remember that you're going to exist, piece it together with existing funds.
I figured you'd remember that part. Okay.
Mr. Rose, I appreciate the job you've been doing to assist the flooded victims out there, our way. And I know it's not an easy task. The one thing that I've heard since we've had this vote about the buyout program is that the criticism what, that I received was, you know, we, we can't impact what the board does, but they are saying, but if we are bought out, where can we go? That's, and that is the problem, and I wanted you aware of that. Some of the people have no place to go and no resources for which they can go anyplace. So if the buyout comes about and you know what you're, what we're talking about buying out, it wouldn't be enough to relocate or whatever.
Absolutely. The way it's built in this time, with Hurricane Floyd, we actually had supplemental funding from the state. With the buyout program, the hazard mitigation grant program, the way it's structured now, there is actually additional funds to help folks relocate and get into a comparable house. So that is all wrapped within the federal funding itself.
So you're finding houses?
We're not to that point yet.
But that was the concern, no place to go, and they can't find houses. So I just wanted the board to be aware of certain kinds of things when we make those kinds of decisions.
James, how big is your department right now? How many, what's your head count?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
What is your head count in your department? This person would go to your department, right?
Correct. We have six planners, one existing housing coordinator, and a signed coordinator as well, an administrative position.
Nine, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what it came out to be.
And development business is booming.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
And sand mines are coming to you. So this is a much-needed position right now, again, to help us get in line. The planners are going to be involved, especially with some of the repair work. One of the staff members actually has an inspection background, so we'll be going out and doing preliminary assessments before we send those off for further assistance, whether it be a contractor or whomever at that point to do the work.
Have you got a job description for this particular?
We do. It's already been, we have an existing position, and that job description has been recently updated and approved by Human Resources, so it's ready to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hood, then Commissioner Ward.
Uh, Mr. Rose, this in the, is an additional position, is that right?
That is correct.
So, and this will be a permanent position?
Well, at this point, it is grant-funded. We'll treat it as grant-funded. If the funding goes away, and like I gave you some of the closeout dates here, I would say twenty twenty is probably the sunset date at the latest.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we give Mr. Rose this opportunity, and knowing that he will do the best he can to, with Florida, to figure out how to get this payment done. And we know that it probably might come to an end in twenty twenty, and that time we might consider that you still may need somebody. So consider that in your twenty twenty budget.
I'll remember that part.
So that's my motion.
Thank you.
Okay, it has been moved, do we get a second? Has been moved in proper to second that we approve funding of this. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rose. Okay, at this time, we have the Indian Green Corporate Parks, Parkway Pro, Road Improvement Contract. Wanda and Dan Withers.
Thank you. Chairman McGlohan, other members of the county commissioners. I'm Brad Hofford with the Pitt County Development Commission. Been working closely with our partners at Rivers and Associates on this project in response to the road deterioration on Sog Parkway. If you'll recall, in January, we received industrial development fund grant to cover the costs of road repair as well as sewer extension in the southern portion of the Indian Green Corporate Park. And the bids have been received on Ju- Thursday, June twenty-second. Three bids were opened, and the low bidder was S.T. Wooton Corporation at a total bid of four hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars. We are asking the board to approve that contract so that we can get started on repairing the road out there.
I made for approval.
Moving proper to second, questions?
Yes, in view of the fact, we're talking about roads, and there are a lot of big trucks that have, that must go or use the roads over there in the park. And listening to all the discussion about roads tear on sand mines, since Mr. Rose kindly reminded me of it, then is, is, it is, in this bid, a thickness, and it might be helpful for the RPO person, is, is the construction or the buildup or the change or the repair of this road gonna support the, the heavy truck, big truck, and avoid what we had to deal with as it relates to sand mines?
Yes, ma'am. This, this road, when it was originally constructed, was not built to standards to support the weight of large trucks, and it kind of deteriorated over time, but then also it kind of accelerated with all the construction that's... with all the construction that's been going on in Ingraham, which is a good thing. But, um, we've, uh, had preliminary discussions with DOT that, uh, this road would be built to standards to where DOT would, would possibly take that over upon completion, and then they would continue the maintenance, the, the state would continue the maintenance on that road.
That, that, that was my concern.
Questions, comments? Ready to vote? Has been moved and promptly seconded that, that we approve this request. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Order of collection to the Pitt County Tax Collector for fiscal year?
Permitting Services.
Uh, Permitting Services Organization at this time. Tim Corley. Okay.
Actually, Tim is out of the country. Florida's gonna pitch it for him.
Good morning. Um, I've been working with Mr. Corley. Um, he's had an opportunity, he's had a vacant position in his department, which was a permitting coordinator position. He'd like to take this opportunity to reorganize his department, change the coordinator position to a technician position, which will give him two people. And the reason it's coming to the board is because he had one fifty percent person, so he had two full-time and one half. And he'd like to change the fifty percent position to a seventy-five percent position. By downgrading the coordinator position to a technician position, he will save, he will save monies. Um, and it'll be enough to cover the additional twenty-five percent for the existing halftime position.
Okay.
The overall impact is savings to the county, therefore I make a motion with approval.
I second it.
Has been moved promptly second, Commissioner.
That's what I was going to ask. I want to hold it to this, it was in the agenda by the beginning, uh.
We're gonna keep that.
The cost associated as a savings to the county.
Yes, sir.
You can hit on it, Jimmy.
Yeah, we're gonna keep that right alongside that comment that James made.
Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed. Motion carries. All right now. Kathy?
Um, you, you were, have already been given a report on the, um, June collection, and you've already been given a report on the annual settlement, so it's time for us to look forward now. Um, and per statute, um, you, um, would need to, uh, issue an order of collection for the seventeen, eighteen year.
Move approval.
Second.
Moving promptly second that we approve this. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right. Appointment of animal cruelty investigator, Scott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have the recommendation to appoint Brittany Internato as an animal cruelty investigator.
I'm moving for appointment.
Has been moved and promptly seconded, we approve. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed. Motion carries. A nomination of Greenwood Utility Commission, Scott.
Move your appointment, Mr. Butler.
It's actually a nomination to the Greenville, um, City Council for, for him to be appointed by City Council, just want to clarify that.
It's been moved and promptly seconded, we appoint Mr. Butler. All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, Scott?
On the next one, you have an appointment, reappointment to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee. You have the, um, appointment of Lolita Harbert and reappointment of Alice Keane.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Has been moved and promptly seconded that we approve the said names. All in favor, right hand. All opposed. Motion carries. Next, uh, Scott?
Next one, you have on the pit area transit system board, Pats. A recommendation for appointment of Christina Bell to represent ECBCC seat on the Pats Advisory Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Has been moved and promptly seconded. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed. Thank you. Scott?
Next, you have a reappointment and appointment to the Pitt County Nursing Home Adult Care Community Advisory Committee for the, um, reappointment. You have Patty Leary, and for the appointment, Madeline Jones.
Move to approve.
Motion unproperly seconded, we approve said name, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Motion carries. Scott?
On the next one, for the reappointment to the DSS Board, you have Commissioner, um, Mary Perkins-Williams, sorry. Blanked out there for a moment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This will be her first full-term appointment. I believe she was in a, in a, an expired term before, so.
Okay, has been moved and promptly seconded that we reappoint. Ms. Williams, those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Motion carries. Scott?
Next one is an appointment for the Greenville Board of Adjustment. This is Jane Mortz, filling an expired term.
So move.
Second.
Has been moved and promptly seconded. We, we appoint the said name. Those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Motion carries. Scott?
Next, you have a reappointment to the, um, NCE East Alliance Board. This would be for Todd Edwards.
Motion to reappoint.
I second it.
Has been approved. Uh, motion that we approve, said name, and second. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Motion carries. Uh, Scott?
The last one is for an appointment to the Viden Medical Center Board of Trustees. Um, the Board of Trustees is seeking, uh, a appointment for a county commissioner to sit on the, um, Board of Trustees for the.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate, um, Jimmy Garrus. Jimmy.
Has been moved and promptly seconded that we nominate Jimmy Garrus for the seat. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner, comments? I'm going to start from Glenn.
Um, I'd like to say that, um, I think I mentioned it before, but just in case, on August the fifth of the area, my district is having a, uh, sponsoring an area cleanup. Uh, we will be having a meeting of those leaders for the various roads and the various faith community persons at, um, Northern Pitt County Improvement Association on, um, July the thirteenth, that's Wednesday evening at six o'clock. And at that point, they will receive their, uh, supplies, the vests and the signs, the bags and the sticks, and the sticks and the hats and everything else that they say they need, uh, to get the job done. Um, I will send a list of the streets and roads that they have identified that they'll be willing to assist with the pickup to our clerk so that the sheriff department and, uh, his staff can help with the, uh, I won't say policing. I'll call it patrolling, because if the community see a presence, maybe they will slow down a little bit. Um, the, um, the maintenance department over here does not have enough of the signs to put out because of the wide area that we will be working on, on the teleph, on the, uh, stop sign at the beginning and end. And, um, so we need some visibility of the cars. It just, just to ride slowly through so that they would know. We are putting the signs out that the, they gave us to use, but they don't have anymore. And at this time, I'd like to thank the faith community, and I'm not going to call in their name because we are going to send that to Gigi, and then we, some of them are still deciding. Uh, but I do know that, uh, two churches have accepted doing green street because they see the grass overflowing the, um, the, uh, curving. And so there will be some weeding done around mailboxes in the curving for some areas. Um, I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Rose and his department for all that they're doing to assist in maintenance because it is a strain on their supplies. And, uh, and as well as, uh, those who are supporting this effort. It is our effort to do the little bit we can muscles-wide that does not cost additional cost any of the do for cleaning up, making our county look better from the various areas that people visit us. And that we can at least say that we are proud of what we have, and we're doing the best that we can to assist in that pride. So this is what it's about. And, uh, if you all would like to come and join us, we'd be happy to have all the extra muscles and effort. And if anybody in, anyone in the community who lives in the district or not live in the district and wanted to assist, just call us at 252-215-3064. We do plan to put something in the paper. This was an effort started by the, uh, Johnson Family Reunion and all of their visitors who were coming in from all over the state because they reside and they lived on Old River Road for a long time. And we just partner with them to help us make a difference in our community. Thank you.
No comment.
Good.
Thank you, Mary, for your, uh, works in that line.
I echo Commissioner Owens's comment.
No comment.
No comment.
Move for German.
I second.
Has been moved and promptly seconded that we adjourn, now adjourn.